We're live.
On to tonight's executive committee meeting. Today is August 16th, 2021. Uh, maybe have a poll call of committee members.
Ms. Chaney?
Here.
Mr. Pritnoff?
Not here.
Mr. Simley?
Here.
Mr. Tyler?
Here.
Mr. Wilkins?
Here.
Do you have a motion to excuse Mr. Pritnoff? All right, that's it.
Oh. I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Set.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Has everyone had a chance to review tonight's agenda? For a second? On favor?
Aye.
All right, and no one is registered to the rest of the day tonight, so we can move on to approving each of our twelve minutes. Do you have a motion to approve those minutes?
I make the motion.
Second?
Set.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Right, on to new business, which is the waste collection RFP. We met, uh, Ms. Chaney, uh, Mr. Lanzier, Mr. Hertz, and I met with the Rumpkey representative, what was it, about a month ago at this point, seems like ages, but we went over the response to the RFP. Um, he did not provide a copy of the contract for us yet, but when he does, uh, this committee will review it. Uh, some highlights from the new contract are that we're going to move to weekly recycling, to keep the same size recycling bins. Um, we're going to start a yard waste recycling program with them, which would be four weeks in the spring and eight weeks in the fall. Um, they are also allowing extra bins at each residence and, um, apartment complex or quad complexes, um, at no additional charge. Residents just need to request those. Um, and this ends up only being a modest $1 increase per month over our last contract, so that is good news. Then, does anyone have any questions?
Have the residents, um, request, do we have, can we, like, have that out, like a link or the phone number or something?
Yeah, there's a couple of administrative things that need to be done, so we'll have, um, this committee, probably as soon as we get that contract, I'll send that out to everybody. In fact, I'll send it to everybody, um, so you can take a look at it. Um, after that, Mr. Dahl and I have been discussing whether or not, what we did the last time was the tenants of the Rumpkey contract became a part of the ordinance, which makes it difficult if there's something that we want to change that's not working or we want to make in addition. We're thinking, at this point, the ordinance will just adopt the new contract, but it won't be stated in our ordinances like it was the last time. Um, so that has to be resolved. Um, then what we'll do is update the website with all of the new information, and then Rumpkey, at their cost, will send out information on the new contract to everybody. So with the yard recycling, one of the things that, um, is becoming evident to us is trying to cut down the labor and the cost burden of doing leaf recycling. What this program will allow us to do is that those folks who write their own leaves can put them in bags. Rumpkey will pick those up and then, rather than going into the landfill, they will go into recycling somewhere. So that'll be a part of their business when they do that. The other initiative that we're working on, which we, we've had the initial discussion, but I think I mentioned, um, go zero in terms of doing a leaf to store property. Haven't really moved forward on that, but with easing Rumpkey into our yard waste recycling as a possible other option for us to do some of these larger projects, I keep implying to say net zero.
Go zero?
Go zero. Um, that will allow us to have a more environmentally friendly program. Should help us be able to reduce some of the labor costs that we have. Um, and when I say reduce labor costs, that means we'll be able to use our maintenance people for other projects in the village that sit, um, for the fourth quarter without being done. Any of you have anything to pitch in on that?
I think you covered it. Covered nicely. Um, leaf collection in particular, um, requires, between four and five people, that's all of our full-time guys, and then all of our three part-timers, at least five days a week. Uh, most often because of weather, they're here on the weekends, and we're accumulating a lot of overtime from October through, uh, two years ago from January. This looks to be providing an opportunity where, um, in terms of labor costs, we can reduce that.
Have we ever, on leaf collection, or I didn't expect that, have we ever looked at, like, temporary labor? Um, like staffing agencies, like, right, temporary, like, those costs, or for those weeds?
At this point, temporary labor would probably cost more than what we pay in an hourly rate. It would be over $15 an hour. Usually those types of jobs, they're skilled, but they're not sold.
Right.
Say you're looking closer to a $20, $20 an hour, the actual, the employee doesn't actually make $20 an hour, but there's a, there's enough charge there that the staffing company would get.
My understanding is they have used seasonal hope in the past, and, um, they haven't had much luck with it. It's hard to get people to show up when it's cold and raining, to do that kind of work.
Uh, with the yard waste, uh, recycling too, didn't we discuss whether people would be able to use their own cans that they labeled yard waste?
We did.
As an option?
And that'll, that'll be an option for them. So I don't know. We, we see it because we live on Englewood, live near Englewood, so Gulf Mares on one side, City's on the other side. The folks on the Cincinnati side have their own trash bins that are labeled yard waste, um, in various creative ways. That would be the same thing that we would, uh, heard. I think one of the things that we are hoping to do, and we'll have more discussion about this, is we need to try not to incentivize our residents to put things in the street, particularly with some of the drainage issues that we have with stormwater and the sewer system. So if there's a way that, that we can find a more environmentally friendly option in addition to keeping from creating labor force and cleaning up gutters and grates and those kinds of things, it's a win-win for everybody. I would be pleased to see that the contract did not go to a 20% increase, which had we renewed three years ago, it would have gone up that much. To is carry out and carry back senior residents is something that is built now. We talked about doing that at an extra charge.
That extra $4?
It was something like that, but there are so few who do that that vision that the village will just beat that cost. But it's not that we're going to tell people that that program is there, we'll develop on an as requested, for instance. There's, he said, a dozen? What did he say? Twelve people?
They weren't, they weren't bringing?
Something like that. I've had, in the last three years, maybe two requests. So, I don't know. We'll continue to evaluate that as, as long, but that would be a good reason why we would not want this contract in our ordinance, so we can change things like that if they benefit our residents, rather than having to go there and change your ordinance. Um, the other thing to consider, especially with that program, is our population is skewing younger now, so, um, that being the case, there may not be any additional request for that kind of service.
Right. Mr. Mayor, um, I believe you can just call Rumpkey currently. I have some neighbors who have done that, who request those extra bins. I think we're allowed one extra recycling and one extra waste.
So currently, they're going to tell you there's an extra charge.
Right.
So wait until after the new project, contract starts.
Obviously, you'd like to do some other things, that we send out as well.
I think the effective date will be October 1st for that contract, correct?
So what I would like to do is that the next executive meeting is have a discussion, and then we'll approve the contract at the finance meeting on September 27th, I believe it is. So finance will have an opportunity to take a look at that. The reason finance needs to look at that is we do our billing through, um, Greater Cincinnati Water Works, and there's an upcharge that they charge us that goes back to the residents. It's a minimal amount, but, um, that also has to, to be approved.
Moving on to playground equipment, against the COVID grant, uh, the mayor and I met with a liaison from a company called Game Time. Those are really neat, um, catalog here. Um, they are the company that actually installed our last, our current playground setup. So one thing we did learn is that he can find a replacement part for that one piece that is missing, one of those bars. And he also has, um, a way to fix the tread for some of it is wearing, um, like the platforms that they walk on. Uh, there's a specific, there was like a tape that they use, um, that works really well. Um, we met with him and provided a long list of items, pre-standing items, um, that we thought would work well in the space that we have. Um, we ran that list by him. He said, he's all, look like they will fit. Um, you chose good items. It's a really, really long list. Um, and so then, uh, a few packages were put together within the amount of money of the $50,000 limit that we have. Um, and then those options, so it'll be like this one slide, or basically a choice like A or B. Choose five each package totals to the amount of money that we can spend. Um, this was sent out to, um, almost twenty families in the neighborhood for them to give their input. And anyone who wants this email, wants to give their input, can also get a copy of this email and give their input on which packages and options they like. Um, that, I believe his name was Grant from Game Time. He is getting back to us with mockups, um, of our part with that, um, with the different equipment options that we had chosen, and also with the, um, installation costs. And hoping that we get that by the end of this week.
I had, uh, in the email that we sent out, uh, requesting that the parents to provide their feedback about which toys they thought, or which equipment they thought would be, um, would be best. Um, also requested, uh, input on which items, if it turned out that the installation cost was going to require us to cut some items, which items could those be? So I understood, had yet to follow up with the administration on this, but understood from a previous, previously looking at a contractor for this, the administration saying that $19,000 be set aside for, for installation, or the administration.
Well, that's a problem at this point, because we are re-appropriating. I forget what the number was.
Aye.
Yes.
Thirty-four thousand dollars.
So we're, we're taking $34,000 out of the reserve, so essentially that additional $19,000 is not appropriated at this point.
Right.
So council need to make a decision whether or not you wish to do that.
Okay.
Um, so it's, if we don't do that, then the $50,000 we're getting from the county will have to cover the purchase of the items and the installation.
That's why the question was asked, to me, that we had to follow up with your head in law, or how many we secure that was, but it may not certainly play a certain contractor.
Is there anybody here who would like a copy of this mail, sent to them?
I would like to see what you picked out. I want to know, um, also, are you getting a new flooring? Because I understand our insurance company said that the flooring under that isn't included.
Were you talking about like the mulch or the?
Whatever goes under playground equipment, because I believe that was included in the other, the adventurous child.
Okay.
Actually, that was not.
It wasn't? I bet it was.
No, it wasn't, because we are going to need to replace the current mulch that's there. But one of the things that, that, in talking with the insurance company in the last couple of weeks, the higher you go on playgrounds, the softer the surface needs to be.
That makes sense for the fall.
For the fall, the cushion. So we're going to need to evaluate what the depth of whatever surfaces that we choose are under that. That's then going to, going to have to determine what mulch is or whatever we put under there. They've asked for a certificate of grading for the mulch, and, and we don't have the mulch vendor that we are getting our mulch from, that provided that to us.
Okay.
So I don't know if that's going to be a new practice that we need to install as a best practice. It's something that we're going to have to try and figure out.
Okay, I was going to say, as Chaney, of course, I heard about, um, a flooring issue. Did you know that our mulch needs topped up, have to replace?
We had done that every two years, but I think about rains, that we had to really take it. I'm doing the last year, so.
Happy, would you like to look at a couple of these now, tag some of the items? This email, it's, um.
So if you're keeping the equipment that's over there already, where are you going to put the new equipment?
There, um, are, let me show you, there are some smaller things, since our current setup does not have much for younger, like, two to five-year-olds. There are smaller things like these spring riders, um, that can fit in the free spaces. And then we also, since the, um, tables are movable, the thought was that there would be a more dedicated picnic area and the racks on the other side. So with those tables moving, there would be, uh, more room for this equipment. Mr. Mayor?
All right, yeah, the, um, the mockups that we're waiting for, that's what it is showing, like, here's the different options of where you can place things, because there's, there's requirements around the distance between items that's required. Basically, it's the, you know, the bucking distance, or like the, how, how far a child would be thrown from one of the, from one of the activities. You don't want to have another structure so close that they'd be thrown into the next one, so they have like their data on how far a kid will fly, right? And then they, you know, that's the distance between the items that you have to have. So they're going to give us a couple of mockups on the items that, that we're looking at, where they could be placed at to make it work.
Yeah, I think that area is called the use, use zone.
Yeah.
What's the deadline for the grant?
I'm sorry.
What's the deadline for the grant?
At the end of?
The monies need to be spent, and we have to turn our receipt into a reimbursement by September 30th. So, um.
September 30th.
So I need to get back to the county. Joy Pearson resigned, so they're in a leadership change there.
Okay.
So I've been holding it a day for a week or so. The council will need to appropriate the $50,000, and, because it's over my limit. Then we'll need to know what the additional cost for installation would be. So Mr. Lanzier is able to tell us if we can appropriate that money?
Aye.
I, I did have a question. The $50,000, I assume, can go towards installation and the equipment itself, right?
I assume.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
The, uh, the ballpark figure that we were given is that figure that'll be about a third of the cost. Like, if you're spending $50,000, a third of that's going to be installation. That's what the county told us. And that's what, um, our, your, uh, one of the liaisons, uh, told us, not this guy. Um, I quoted that number to this guy, and he said, that sounds about like $19,000 that could cover it. So, you know, but again, we put the word out to get input about which of these items, you know, are as high priority for the.
Is there any of that money on those responses?
We just sent that out today.
But is there any of that money on the, on their responses?
In the email, I said, it would be awesome if we got the responses within the next seven days, because it specifically will help us with the installation, getting clear on the installation.
Any other questions about playground? I think it's you or the other.
Didn't insurance, our insurance company have some concern about, what is that going to be? About existing with it?
Yeah, in, in July, the insurance company again brought up the issue of the integrity of the equipment across the street. They've actually done a study, and are doing a study. Um, I'm not sure if we should hear something.
Okay. Okay, so in the meantime, I'm a little upset because council was left out of this, and council is the decision-making body here, and we weren't included in this. So I would like to make a motion, uh, tonight, for, um, Mr. Hertz to go ahead and contact Adventurous Child, see what, um, they can come up with now, uh, for the $50,000, so we have something to compare to what this is.
Does Adventurous Child see?
It's the previous one, yeah.
RJ?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. You know, why should it, I, you know, I, I need something to compare to.
Well, I think the proposal's still on the table, correct?
I haven't seen.
It's, well, the proposal went up.
Right.
It's $90,000.
So now it's.
So what we have to do is go back to him and say, what's $50,000?
I think what is unfortunate is that there is such a limited amount of time in which it's.
Wait a minute, Mr. Hertz told you, and Mr., and the mayor, and the park, you had one week to come up with this. It's been over six weeks now. Don't tell me there's a time crunch now. You waited six weeks on this.
Right, but that's a, a month and a half compared to how long we had known that this money was available to use for playgrounds, but in the scheme of things, it's a small amount, I believe. I don't know how long we had known about this money, but we didn't get to put in any input until six weeks ago. And I, and I do hope that this committee can review and look over, these items are all pre-standing. It's not just one thing, so it really is going to be a pick and choose process. It involves community members, involves this committee, and thus eventually involves the whole council. I think that council members, kids on this, yes, the RJ and, um, well, that's not a council, but he got the email, and it went to Roger today, too, just about an hour ago.
Yeah, actually, there's one, uh, son of a older lady found stacks, but must have been wrong. Rogers found stacks, so.
Okay. But yeah, everyone with kids, yes, also, everyone with kids are, we thought they would have the most interest in the kid equipment, but I didn't want to just welcome them to look at this. But it wasn't until last week that we were able to meet with the plan, and know that he could work with us in this timeframe.
Yeah.
But he would like to meet with, I mean, he did make a motion, so.
I accept this, Janey.
On favor?
Aye.
Sorry, not listed as a portion. If there's any discussion. I guess we did somewhat have a discussion for him, but.
Let me clarify what the motion is.
Sure.
I have a motion for Mr. Hertz to contact Adventurous Child concerning a revised quote of playground equipment for Harrison purpose.
Send a motion for us, Chaney.
Obviously.
Right.
We have second. Is this a vote?
You can do all in favor.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I'm fine to look at. Any options that are available?
Any opposed?
Any, oh, sorry, any opposed? No. Mr. Mayor?
Uh, the comment that I would have liked to have made before the vote, which I also made to, to inform the, uh, the council last time this body met, was that Adventurous Child never got back with me. We met, uh, with Ms. Chaney, and I and Mr. Hertz, um, met with the Adventurous Child representative, and I specifically asked for some, uh, examples of the previous work, other, uh, other places where they put in the equipment, so we could look at it. It was hard looking at some of the pictures to know how big some of the things were, and one of the, one of the concerns was that what we'd be replacing it with was actually smaller than what we currently had, and some of the research that, uh, that I wanted to do and ended up doing. But to that specific point, I said, is there some other, you know, examples that we can go and look at? And are there examples online, some links? And, uh, he said, I'll get back with you on that. Never heard from him again. And I, uh, informed this body at the previous meeting of that, and my low confidence, and my, my concern about continuing to work with someone when they're not getting back with you when you're asking for things like, you know, references.
And that was four weeks ago.
Yeah.
So was that an email request, a verbal request?
It was a verbal request, yes.
I mean, I don't think cutting a relationship just because that.
Well, no, and, and I'm not, I'm not opposed to, like, strictly saying worth the $50,000 offer. I mean, versus what you're saying was 90. Not opposed to that, I'm just saying I have reservations.
So can I make a suggestion here before we get? I, what I see from sitting in my seat, my seat, my seat, is that there's not a consensus here among you in terms of how the process was handled, and in terms of what's been selected. So in the timeframe that we have, we can't wait until the next council meeting to have a discussion on this. You guys really, within the next ten days, probably need to make a decision. I think part of the issue is, is you, you do need the mockups to be able to see what this other equipment would look like. I don't want to go down the road of talking to RJ Rushing again if we're just knocking at the door and not going to do anything with him. I would recommend that, and this is your decision, um, to schedule a meeting, um, separately with the executive committee. We'd have to get a, um, special meeting specifically to talk about that way all of the members of this body can have a chance to review the plans, let you guys talk it through, figure out what you want to do. From our standpoint, the biggest thing that we need to know is, is what, what, what is the county going to do with that money? How can we preserve that? And then we have the funding issue that Mr. Lanzier's going to have, um, sharing with me about where can we get the installation money. So in, in, in truth, depending on if, if, if the number that we're working toward is $19,000. Versus installation too.
Okay.
And what, what about refurb, we can't use to be refurbished, like, what, but we have to do that on our own?
So if we are buying pieces that can be added to, I'm sure, that may be worth. Point two, when you guys meet, we should have the report back on the integrity of the pieces across the street.
I do regret that this process has been rushed and not as inclusive of the whole body as it should have been. So I apologize for that, and I wish that, if it's so rushed, and I would like to have a special meeting so we can dedicate time just to this issue, uh, and everyone else's.
This council just needs to start working together. We are not working together at all.
I would say, I mean, while our council, if we talk to each other, yeah.
Given the time constraints, would it not make more sense to establish a deadline for the information, whether it's from Adventurous Child or Game Time, be submitted to Mr. Hertz? And then allow him to, with Mr. Lanzier, evaluate the information and make a decision before it gets done.
So, just real quick, if you schedule a special meeting for Monday night for 23rd, that's a week from tonight, does that, Mayor, does that, do you think that proposal, those mockups, will be in in a week?
Could you repeat that, please? I'm sorry.
If we schedule a special meeting for next Monday night, will that information be in in time for this body to discuss that on the?
Certainly, I hope so. I was hoping the, uh, the information would be available last week, frankly.
So.
And, and to, uh, to that point, the, uh, one of the other things that I made, um, the whole council aware of was the creation of a park committee, and ask specifically for people to be giving me their recommendations for a park committee, with moving forward decisions like this do need to include a formal process of how everyone is being informed because of the deadline. As I said at the previous council meeting, there's some things that we, we very fast, and we plan on including all the parents that we know in the village, and that's not a fair cross-section of the village, unfortunately. Um, but it's, I said in the previous council meeting, we need to get the word out there to as many parents as we can. We're planning on putting it in a newsletter to get out ASAP, to get, uh, folks' feedback on. But I agree that this is not the process that we want to use, but unfortunately, we have a very tight timeline to get it done. And again, I've heard back from people about wanting to be on the park committee, but if anybody here knows of folks that want to be on the park committee or themselves wants to, you know, be a part of, of that process in the future, certainly.
So when I talk to the county this week, I'm going to tell them that we will execute a contract no later. Something else isn't working, no later than Wednesday, September 15th, which means we cut a check that day to whomever's going to do the work and submit the receipt that day.
Can you disagree with a contract without council approval, that's a dollar amount?
Uh, that's, well, depends on what, depends on what it is with that particular amount.
Just a thought.
Yeah, we may have to, well, at that point, we'll have a council meeting on the.
27th?
Yeah, we may have to, well, at that point, we'll have a council meeting on the, we may have to call another special meeting. So, so here's the thing, if, if we can have as our drop dead date for data gathering next Monday, have your special meeting, is the special meeting workable for next Monday?
It is for me.
Mr. Wilkinson? Mr. Simoni?
Monday is not a good day for me, but it's not my, I mean, it's my committee, but I don't give a speech.
So, and I would include all of council in this discussion.
There's another thing too, I need to bring up too. If we're replacing our equipment, don't we have to have something from the, according to the American Disabilities Act? Did you pick out anything for that?
There are some that are like zero.
ADA compliant.
Yeah, I, they're like, you don't have to get up and they're like seats. The answer is yes, I don't know exactly how you describe them, but they do have like this autism, the one fucking bouncer seat thing, that is ADA compliant, right?
Yeah, so they, they have, you know, what are the things called that, that go around?
Mayor Doris, no.
You know what I'm talking about though, how like you all, what is it called, it's in the email, but they, the way they do the seating now for this, when we were kids, it feels like there was railings, you'd just stand on it, on the railings and, you know, use your feet and just spinning around and everything. Well, I have chairs, so it's ADA compliant, so a bunch of kids can sit there, you can turn a thing, you like spin it until you're dizzy and everything, but you're sitting in a chair, so you can be paralyzed, you can, you know, yeah.
Can you use a wheelchair in it?
Yes, one of, specifically has a place for you to pull a good chair. So yeah, these are the folks that we're using, remember the context of this was I was coming from a place of a vendor that wasn't giving me any references, and so I went to Hamilton County Parks and said, who do you guys use? And they gave me a couple that they were great with, it would be the names of the liaisons that they're using, the companies that they're using, so this is park equipment that Hamilton County, you know, vets as being that these companies are ADA compliant and all that stuff, that's, that's the benefit of using, I mean, people have those questions.
Do we need to make a motion to set this special meeting?
Um, I believe council has to set the special meeting, so in your report, you can make a recommendation to set the meeting here and then confirm it during your committee. So is that, I know Mr. Knapp has an issue getting here before 6:30. I think Mr. Frednell probably has that same issue. So did you want to suggest doing it on the table here at 6:30 PM?
Uh, yes, that is fine. That was the 23rd at 6:30.
So did you want to make a motion?
Yes, I made a motion to recommend that we set a special meeting.
To discuss.
To discuss park equipment, September 23rd, 6:30 PM. Oh, sorry, August. Rushing Summer Way, for a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Given the time, it seems that we should move on and quickly discuss Fremont Avenue. There was some chatter online about a lot of wrong way traffic on the one-way section of Fremont, but Campbell is here to give his input on this. Have you gotten a lot, you escaped a lot of calls regarding this?
Have not.
Have not, okay. And, well, we have two Fremont residents in the gallery too, have you guys witnessed this as an issue?
I've been in the corner of Fremont ferro since 1974. I've watched this, I remember when it was two-way and it was a way to get kids, and you cannot do that. I heard some chatter about that, that's ridiculous. Yes, people go the wrong way. I have reviewed the one-way, which are delivery drivers for things like Uber Eats and pieces and sandwiches, they come up ferro, they go down, halfway down the hill, they come around and they come back because they don't know how they happen where they are, so they have to back when they came, of course, they're doing this, or they're driving, you know, and if you see people blow up the hill and they go right through the ferro, so they don't see the stop sign, of course, they can't stick this into gigantic signs and say do not enter, which I don't understand how you can miss those, so yes, people do it, it's been going on since it was made one-way. I have more concerns about people coming from the 24, 2500 block of Fremont and running the stop sign at full speed at ferro. That is a much bigger concern, and people coming up from Kellerman and turning onto Fremont without ever slowing down. People going the wrong way, if they're going the wrong way, they come up and they look really confused about picking up this intersection, and you see those signs, they kind of, whoa, what did I just do? You know, and then they hurt, they hurt it internally. I see people come to the intersection and back up on Fremont heading west to get to their first few houses because they don't want to go around the block. That's been going on for 47 years, so I don't know. I don't, I don't see that. I understand there's some concerns, how you, how you, you could put up 25 sign, somebody's going to blow it through, you know, if you miss those two red forest and signs, if they do not enter, I, sorry Chief, I'm, I'm with you, I, I don't know how people miss those two signs.
Yeah, and my experience has been, because I would, line control, I would watch that in an area, I would sit around Mayflower and see a three-stop sign, I couldn't see the hill, and if, over the years, if I stopped wanting people coming down the wrong way, and team up with delivery drivers, like we said, or contractors, and they go and work at a house, and people leave, they just bear the same way they came. I, I have an experience, a resident that blatantly ignored, and I haven't seen. I would, I would suggest if there's any type of pattern, if in that chatter, somebody says, I see it every day, somebody goes and they let us know, I can direct officers to clean the area at the time. Otherwise, you know, we, it's, and we enforce it when we have time, we randomly watch it, we see somebody go on that, we make contact with them. But we've not been informed that there's any kind of issue about that that happens to a kind of time, and we see it and we address it.
Does anyone have, yes, a Fremont resident?
I can basically, far with what we both said, I can't say I've ever seen a REEP be a vendor, it's always somebody that is, that's know the area. It's anecdotal, but I don't see ever some people coming from the Santa River. I think with.
Very still.
I think it's when they, I'm just trying to give them grace, that sometimes when you're going on ferro's and you don't know where you're going, you might not see and you just, you just turn, but it's usually people that are new, and even then, the traffic is slow enough that usually they go through the stop sign and come the other way, so it's not super dangerous in terms of two-way traffic, so I don't, we see it, but I don't really give this a problem.
Chief, when that signage was put in, it says do not enter, was, were they doing the wrong way signs then, those big red ones?
I don't, I can't remember.
It makes sense to have those there so people look at them and say, wrong way, stop.
Yeah, I don't remember the signage changing. It may have when they redid Fremont from the block top to the concrete, like we have a Kellerman, there's some signs that got shifted or adjusted, but I don't recall it all, you know, specifically that any of the signs has changed. Around ferro's, you may be able to look at a more visible sign that people coming across ferro's can see it easier. I think how the signs are oriented now are just where people are coming the wrong way from the Santa River, so they might not see that big turn right, a big turn west.
Actually, I've seen no right turn or left turn when you're coming across ferro's. I wonder if we could look at doing something like that.
I know there's some, there's some trees on, on Northwest Corner, those might be obstructing some of the signs.
There'd be one one-way sign, that's the difficult hole of an old tree.
Yeah, mostly it was one person, one comment Facebook.
Yeah.
That got a lot of traction and said, let's add this to the agenda, open up a can of worms.
Yeah, and it's really, my opinion, having sat there for that, you may allow the do not enter with one-way or something like that, but I mean, if I see it, you can't stop because it's hard, it's going to work. Like Roger said, most people see your, they're tentative, like, please go, are you playing this way?
Well, direct people if they see a pattern too. What's called?
We haven't had any recs on the, on the, that's okay, right?
I will refer what we said though, a lot of the original stop sign from Fremont.
Oh, absolutely. I see you.
Are you saying at the bottom of the hill?
No, I'm talking about, they're coming west on Fremont on the 2500 block, and they don't even slow down.
Oh gee.
And they, they blow right through it, I mean, there's right lights up and down ferro's. And, you know, they come up ferro's and these people are all in pursuit of this brand of any, except the one-way, that's literally every corner.
That's locked.
Yeah, and it might be a Kia too. That's it.
All right.
And as chair of findings, I think we have a pretty quick agenda this evening, so we can go over it all that. That's absolutely acceptable.
All right, thank you. Onto fire services replacements.
Yeah, this, I added this to the agenda this evening, there's going to be discussion about this tonight, but I think our quest to be transparent to our residents and the public at large, to let people know that this is a discussion, we are looking at possibly replacing our fire services, and if you want to hear more about this, tune in later.
Thank you. On to all business, add-in project updates.
Yeah, I'm not going to go into a lot of details, I'm going to talk about more of this at the main meetings, so you don't have to sit through this twice, but things I'm going to update on are the Vera Road project and the fact that ferro's is now being included, a short section. We've secured road project funding for 2022 for Canterbury, Inglewood, and for Elbrook. We, he is still under review, we're still hopeful that we'll have that project next summer also. We've talked about the waste collection contract, liability and property insurance, we'll talk about more. And for this committee, the roof for the fire and rec building, that was completed last month, although we have a leak.
Oh, really?
And it's the HVAC system that's leaking, so I did not get a chance to follow up with Andy today on the contractor that came on Friday. Did they report anything?
No.
Okay. All right, so we'll follow up on that tomorrow, so stay tuned, we'll know more about the water later. And then for this committee, condemned buildings at 6055 and 6066 Stover. Code official Putoff is continuing to work with legal counsel, specifically with Rob Butler, to get that, those buildings into court downtown, and the, the goal is to make the village whole on the monies that we've spent on boarding those buildings up, which will total around $4,000. In addition, we want a long-term solution for those buildings, and they're not going to be habit, not going to be occupied again, I was going to say habitated, they're not going to be occupied again until, until they do something big with them. There's a third one in that same group of buildings that we are actively looking at shutting down, and Mr. Lanzar, actually, I'm sorry, Mr. Putoff is also working directly with those folks. So, well, that's kind of probably things that affect this committee that we don't hold up on.
Any questions for Mr. Hurt? Right, on to pending business, this should be pretty clear. As far as parking, I believe that we're waiting to see how the striping works out on Bureau before we move forward on solving our parking issues within the village for pods, dumpsters, and portable restrooms.
I have a development.
Okay, on the pods or parking?
On pods, dumpsters, and portable restrooms.
Yes.
So I asked Mr. Donovan if he could find some model legislation from other communities that he's worked with on that issue. There are some things that he sent to us that I haven't looked at yet, but I'll get those to you and your committees sometime for the next week or so.
Excellent, thank you.
They're sitting in email at the moment.
Then vacant building ordinance?
Yeah, that is, so Mr. Putoff is working pretty heavily on the Stover issue, and he's also doing some handiwork for us in the hall, which is taking up quite a bit of time, and I encourage you, go take a look at the hall because the vision is coming true. But he is going to pursue reissuing the vacant building orders to the initial 24 that we did in 2019. That'll get us started on that process, so we're looking at doing some heavy enforcement on that in the third quarter, in the third quarter, first and fourth quarter.
And then land board tenant legislation, I believe that we are sliding that now probably for next year.
Yep.
And then finally, again, property maintenance, building code reinforcement strategy.
Yeah.
That's down a bit.
So Mr. Putoff's going to be coming up on his six months, and one of the things that we will do at that point is provide a comprehensive report on the activity that he's done since he started. We're learning to use citizen serve differently than how we have learned it, there are some number of reports and things that it can generate automatically, we're working on that right now. So the goal is to have a comprehensive report in front of this committee and then council on September 13th.
Okay. Any questions on that pending business? Right, then, the only announcement is that we are, is meeting again September 13th at 6:00 PM, and before that, we are going to be meeting August 23rd at 6:30. Do I have a moment to adjourn?
Just a quick comment on the Vompey contract, we're probably the only one in the room that really cares about season collection.
I would lie.
But I would just say, I heard the contract will redo like October 1st. I would say that, given the recent drought of several weeks, leaves are already starting to come off, you have a heavy drop of things from, given people a heads up about possibly getting the bag things or that being available, it's going to be better because I think even in October, unless things change in the season.
So our intent for this season is really not to change the name, because we've not, we've not had any prep time, we didn't know how amenable Vompey was going to be or what a contract would look like. I think this is going to be a multi-year education process for our residents, and I think first, we show it to them as an alternative, so like, I always find myself chipping leaves in the ice in January.
The other thing would be, Vompey would have to be going to work with a number of bags, when people put out lots of stuff, they don't always take them all.
That's, that's part of this contract, they re-put the bags up.
I understand, I walk up a lot of places, and both of the villages, some of the New York way stuff, and all of it's always taken, so, I mean, I just want to make sure that, you know, I do want.
We got your back.
Thank you for the remarks.
I would get my yard.
How about that motion? Did we get one?
I bet it wasn't.
Yeah. Was there a motion to adjourn?
Somebody made it.
I asked for one. Let's do it again.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Are we all in favor? All right. Thank you, everybody.